I will call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in order to practice social distancing, all Planning Commission meetings are currently being held virtually until further notice. We do use the platform called Zoom, which is free for the public and can be accessed via computer, laptop, tablet, or phone. Citizens can watch and participate in a variety of ways. For specific details to participate in this meeting, please visit the calendar page on the city website. You will notice that we will do a few things differently during the virtual format. Commissioners will raise their hand either physically or via the Zoom app to speak, and I will call on them. When, um, all votes will be done via roll call led by Stacy. During the audience input and public hearing portion of the meeting, the public will be able to speak using the microphone on their device if they're using the Zoom web app. Staff will respond to public questions during the meeting, or I'm sorry, during the public hearing. This is normally not done until the end of the public hearing, but due to this format, we are answering questions as we go. Any letters or emails that were received tonight as part of public comment will be reviewed at the beginning of each public hearing item. If you are participating online this evening, during the meeting, you will have the option to use the raise hand feature during portions of tonight's meeting. When doing so, staff will call on you at the appropriate time, and they will unmute your microphone so you can speak. Please make sure you start by stating your name and address for the record. After you are done speaking, you can exit the meeting by clicking on leave meeting or hang up the phone, and you can continue to watch the meeting on TV or online, or you can continue to stay logged into Zoom with your microphone muted. As with our normal meetings, we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak and ask that each person speak only once. We ask you of your comments prepared and ready for when you speak. If you would like to respond to something after you speak, you may do so, but we ask that you keep your response focused and not reiterate comments you've already made. I'll cover these instructions again when we get to the public hearing portion. If you are having any issues tonight, please use the chat on Zoom to communicate with us. This is a different format, um, but we are, we are getting the hang of it, um, after about a year of, of using it. So with that, we will move on to the first item on our agenda this evening, and it is the Oath of Office. We have two new Planning Commission members joining us this evening and one, um, who is, um, continuing his term with us. And so for that, I will turn it over to Mayor Droste.
Thank you. Um, since there are three, I'll do Michael, then Midely and Kevin in that order. So, Michael, you're first up. If you would please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Hi, Michael Reed.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of a commissioner.
The duties of a commissioner.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
And the County of Dakota.
And the County of Dakota.
And the State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Midely, you're next. If you would please raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Midely Tiagran.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of a commissioner.
The duties of a commissioner.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
And the County of Dakota.
And the County of Dakota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And Kevin? I state your name.
I, Kevin Abir.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of a commissioner.
The duties of a commissioner.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
Of the Rosemont Planning Commission.
And the County of Dakota.
And the County of Dakota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to you and the rest of the commission. I want to say thank you for serving our city, um, especially with the Planning Commission. Our public hearings are always held there. So, uh, you probably have a more important role than we as the council because you're the ones directly, uh, connected to the public. So, thank you. Best wishes.
Thank you, Mayor Droste. Um, and next we will move on on the same item as election of Chair and Vice Chair. And so at this time, um, every year we elect a, um, Chairperson and a Vice Chairperson. And so at this time, I will take nominations for the position of Chairperson. Yes, Commissioner Schmuzik.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate you as, as Chairperson if you are still willing to continue.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmuzik. I am still willing to continue. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Move to be close the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. And Commissioner Schmuzik, I think you're on mute, but I think you seconded it.
I am seconded. The rest of you have figured it out. I haven't yet.
Sounds good. Thank you. It is so moved by, um, Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Schmuzik to close nominations. Stacy, will you please take roll?
Henninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Schmuzik.
Aye.
Hey Bear, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry. Reed.
Aye.
Dear Garjan. Rivera.
Aye.
And Midely, I think you were Attili.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you were on mute. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you. Um, nominations for Chairperson have been closed, and with that, we could entertain a motion. Commissioner Reed.
Uh, motion to elect Melissa Henninger by unanimous consent to the position of Chairperson.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Schmuzik. Stacy, will you please take roll?
Henninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Schmuzik.
Aye.
Hey Bear.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Dear Garjan.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passes, and I am, um, honored to serve for another year as your Chair of the Planning Commission. Thank you. And at this, and we would take nominations for Vice Chair. Commissioner Marlo.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Reed for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations. Commissioner Schmuzik.
I would move to close nominations for Vice Chair.
Is there a second? Commissioner Marlo.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And Stacy, will you take roll?
Rivera.
Aye.
Dear Garjan.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Hey Bear. Schmuzik.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Henninger.
Aye. And motions are closed, and at this time, we would entertain a motion for Vice Chair. Commissioner Marlo.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Michael Reed by unanimous consent to the position of Vice Chair.
And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, motion made by Commissioner Marlo, seconded by Commissioner Rivera. Stacy, will you please take roll?
Henninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Schmuzik.
Aye.
Hey Bear.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Dear Garjan.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our Vice Chair for the next year will be Commissioner Reed. Thank you, Commissioner Reed, for being willing to serve in that capacity again as well. Um, with that, that concludes our Oath of Office and Election of Chair and Vice Chair Agenda item. The next item on our agenda is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I have none.
Thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on to audience input. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? So if you're here for one of the public hearing items, we will get to that later in the agenda, but if at this time, anyone in the audience would like to comment on something, you may use the raise your hand button on Zoom, and, um, staff will call on you to speak.
Madam Chair, we have one, um, attendee with their hand raised, Kalina Morgan. Kalina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Be sure to state your full name and address.
Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. My name is Kalina Morgan. Address is 12260 Danbury Way in Rosemont. Um, I am joining this meeting. I am actually part owner of a property, um, in the northern part of the city. I had exchanged a couple of emails with Anthony, and I understand that in 2017, some zoning ordinances were changed and updated. Um, the piece of property that I own, um, is about 80 acres and is currently zoned agriculture. Um, my family and I are interested in opening a wedding event type venue, which I understand this address is not west of Akron and is not north of County Road 42, um, which is one of the requirements for an event center. Um, but I am joining this to see if there is any conversation that can be had or anything like that to see, um, if this is a possibility for this land.
Thank you, Kalina. Um, Anthony, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I can, I can, uh, talk about this, uh, briefly here. I can also show you, um, the property in question, um, that Kalina is referring to. Um, she's wanting to do a, um, oops, commercial event center, um, on an agricultural property. As some of you on the commission may recall, we had, um, made a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that, uh, introduced commercial event centers as conditional uses in properties that are zoned agriculture. Um, during the conversation, um, at that time, there were some concerns by the commission that there were a number of agriculturally zoned properties in the northwest portion of the city, um, that's guided for rural residential development. Um, and there was some concerns by the commission that there would be, um, the potential to use one of those sites for a commercial event center. Um, and the concerns were around the impacts on the neighboring properties. So therefore, one of the conditions within the conditional use, um, standards was that, uh, any commercial event centers located on egg-zoned parcels be located east of Akron Avenue and south of 42. So the, the southeast corner, basically the opposite side of the city, um, from here. So in my conversations with Kalina, um, have, have basically reiterated that information that I just relayed to you, um, that those were the concerns and, uh, requirement to allow such a use up here would, would be that the zoning ordinance, the text of the zoning ordinance be amended yet again to remove that requirement that commercial event centers, uh, not be located east of Akron and south of County Road 42. So I think, um, Kalina is just here to kind of see if there is any appetite amongst the commission to make that change. Um, and if so, then, uh, staff can move forward with her on drafting a text amendment to allow that in addition to a conditional use permit that would be required for that. Um, there's a couple of issues with the site, uh, the biggest one being its location. Obviously, that is, um, uh, it's outside of the, the, what would be permitted for a conditional use, um, as far as location goes. Uh, secondly, there's another condition that the, the, um, operator, owner and operator of such a use be, um, residing on the site, and that's their principal residence. So I think there's those two, um, two conditions that need to be met that wouldn't be met by this site, um, as it stands with the zoning ordinance in place.
Thank you, Anthony. Um, so just, just to understand what you're expecting from us tonight is just kind of our initial thoughts on this and see what our feelings are?
Yeah, and, and from a staff standpoint, you know, we're, we're here to advise you, and, and staff has concerns also about impacts on, um, the, the neighboring properties, the fact that it's a gravel road and, and, um, you know, it's a rural residential area. The, the, the plan, um, that was approved by the City Council in the comprehensive plan, um, designated this as rural residential development. And so from a staff standpoint, we are, are not supportive of a use in this part of the city, um, such as a commercial event center.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Can you just clarify for me too, um, before we made that, that amendment of event centers on agricultural zoned property east of Akron, south of 42, uh, prior to that, event centers wouldn't have been allowed there at all, correct?
Correct. Um, they, they would have been limited to the commercially zoned districts.
Okay, so it's not like, it's not like it was allowed there, and then we restricted it to only east of Akron and south of 42. It was not allowed there at all, and then we said they can be in agriculture, but only in the southern.
Yeah, and the, and.
Area.
What, what really prompted that was, um, a resident had purchased a farmstead with a historical barn structure on the site that, uh, they felt would lend itself well to, um, uh, a wedding venue, and, and we've seen, uh, barns and farms be used as wedding venues, um, in other parts of the region. Um, but again, um, the, the, the commission at the time really had strong concerns about the impacts of a use like that, a commercial event center in a rural residential area.
Right, right. Thank you. Are there any comments from any of the commissioners?
Um, yeah, I'll just say, I mean, this was also similar to the, um, we've seen other proposals come forward like this, and, you know, knowing that area is, you know, fairly residential in nature, I mean, we had, um, um, was it Deer Run or another, uh, subplot that came forward, and there were concerns from the neighbors just about that type of activity there. So I, I think, you know, given that, that the nature of that road being kind of a narrow dirt road, I'd have some, you know, concerns about that as well.
Yeah, I also, I feel like it's a residential area and, um, you know, it would be, I would assume, obviously, if they came forward, all of the parking and everything would have to be on that site. Um, there's no other space for parking or anything like that on the street, but I, I do feel it puts a lot of traffic around that, um, residential area, and the lots are large and, and such out there, except for that is still a lot of people going back and forth, um, on that road and traveling in that area.
And, and there's also the condition that the, the operator of that sort of a use be residing on the site as their, their primary residence. You know, and, and that does add a level of, of maybe ownership or, or that there's someone on site at all hours.
At all times.
Or that.
Uh, this is Kalina again. I was just going to add, so, um, we, it's like a family-owned parcel of land, and so we have actually been discussing over the years if any of us were going to, like, subdivide and move out there. Um, so that one, I totally understand that it's a condition of it as well as we are willing to move, and event center or not, we actually might move out there in the future. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I also, you know, from an event center perspective, you know, so I'm thinking back to some of the conversations we had with, um, when the brewery, um, when we did the brewery, which also was in a, you know, in a somewhat residential area, you know, and closing down at 10 o'clock at night and stuff, and to me, um, like, an event center is going to bring traffic and noise, um, at later hours, um, and be, um, you know, more impactful to the residents there. And so to me, I, I just really feel that area is more of a residential area.
There are some things, I mean, I've been working on, uh, like, my business plan for a wedding and event center, and there are actually things now, um, I've already looked into like permanent, uh, uh, not permanent, but event-centered security. Um, there's also things, because Anthony had sent me, um, I know that, you know, a noise ordinance and, um, being considerate of the neighbors is a big thing. There's actually a company called Silent Disco that essentially the music, you know, shuts down at seven, and then anybody who wants to dance puts on headphones, and so there's actually not amplified music, and there's not amplified music in or outside. So, um, I mean, I've looked into other plots, and, um, there's actually no other plots in the city of Rosemont that work, but I have been looking at other cities. Obviously, this, um, sorry, my son is here. This piece of property is very special to our family. A lot has happened out there, um, and it's obviously a very beautiful piece of property. So this is our first choice and why we're here, but I have put thought into, you know, also considering neighbors, making sure that it's safe for everybody involved as well.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't think this is really an appropriate time to go over the details of that specific use. Really, the question is if there's, um, any appetite by the commission to change the, um, zoning, the conditions related to commercial event centers in agricultural areas, um, or in agricultural zoning districts. Um, you know, if, if, if it changes to, if we were to change the zoning ordinance to eliminate that requirement that it's south of 42 and east of Akron, um, any parcel that meets the size requirement could be used for an event center up there. Um, if it meets the requirements of a conditional use, um, for that, in that area, um, it does have to be approved. Um, I, I, I just want to caution that we're kind of going into the specifics of this specific use.
Right, right.
Really, the, the high-end, the high-end conversation is, is that something that would even, not on this site, but on any site that, that met the five acre minimum requirement, um, is, is that the direction the commission would want to go?
And that would be, you know, there's a lot of those sites that, that are around residential communities then.
And there's, and there's fewer and fewer because as they're getting, you know, they're getting rezoned to rural residential, because that's really what the, the, um, future land use designation is up there, is rural residential, um, with a minimum.
Right.
density of one unit per five acres, but, um, you know, if it's, if it's not still egg as a remnant, um, it's rural residential.
I have a question.
So, so really, I'm just, you know, what, what I'd like to know is, is how, um, what the commission is feeling, um, about it, and then we can have a real conversation if an application comes forward for a zoning ordinance text amendment with, you know, with a use tied to it and all the details kind of figured out. But before the, before the property owner goes that far in, in nailing down the, their specifics on their end, is this even a, a possibility that the commission is interested in entertaining?
Okay, thank you.
And from a staff standpoint, I, I, speaking for my, only myself on the staff, I, I'm not supportive of it, having gone through the comprehensive planning process and hearing the, the feedback we've gotten from the residents of the city, particularly in this part of the, the community, that, that the rural residential designation is really, um, valued by them.
Right. Thank you, Anthony. Commissioner Rivera, you had a question?
Um, yes, so you mentioned they have, uh, I believe, 80 acres. Is that what I heard?
This parcel is 70, yeah, close to 80, 77, plus there's a sliver on the north side, so 80, I would say.
So 80 acres is a huge piece of land, for one. I guess, so I drive down to, to Parable on a regular basis, um, and drive down Highway 3, and there is a wedding event place right on Highway 3 in a rural area. Um, there's also one over in Hastings off of, uh, a rural area road. So I guess, to me, I think it's something that's kind of become more of a thing. So I'm not going to say yea or nay at this time, but, um, it is something that is, is not, um, totally out there, that's not already in the place of, uh, other places that already have them in place, is what I guess I'm trying to say. So, um, and I mean, if it was a 20-acre lot like, uh, Tap Room, you know, that would be different, but this is, this is 80 acres. So I, I guess at this point, I wouldn't be, I'm not going to say I would be totally against it.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Rivera, that, that's, that's totally correct. Um, part of what prompted the initial text amendment was that, um, there is that, you know, farmsteads being repurposed as commercial event centers. Um, I would say that if you're talking about the ones you've seen on county or on Highway 3 or outside of Hastings, they're all located along highways and major roadways. Um, and the minimum lot size requirement for a commercial event center in the city is, is five acres. So just because this one is, is 80, doesn't mean someone couldn't have a five acre parcel, you know, down the road and, and come forward and say we're meeting all the requirements of, of the zoning ordinance for a conditional use, um, you know, there, there would be a, there would be a commercial event center on that site.
And so Anthony, if I'm understanding correctly, we would have to change the ordinance, and then it would open it up beyond just this site. So that's the, the risk of changing the ordinance is, it would then allow any agricultural land, five acres or more in size, to apply for a permit for an event center?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And there isn't an option, isn't a way to do a, a variance or, or anything that would allow an event center here, but not open that up?
Well, it would be a, a, no, there's, there's no, there's no, um, process because it's not a variance. It's not a, it's not a very, uh, you know, it's not varying from.
Right.
A specific standard. It'd be like a wholesale waiver of specific conditions for that use.
Yes, Commissioner Rivera.
Is the five acre, um, is that what's in place now, or is that something that would be in place? Because I guess, thinking down the road, if it's put on where it's more than five acres, then that also would limit folks from just having a wedding event center on every corner.
Well, the five acre minimum was, was related to the fact that a lot of farmsteads are split off from the larger farm acreage, and they tend to be around five acres or so in size. So, so this was never an allowed use in the egg, egg district, egg zoning district before, um, but when the zoning ordinance text was amended, the five acre minimum was put in there so that it would at least have some size, but still line up with what a lot of the, um, farmsteads that exist out there are, are, are fit for. Really, the, the intent of the ordinance, and I, I want to reiterate this again, was that it would allow people who had farmsteads that were, um, that had barn structures, historic barn structures, allow those property owners to make, make use of those structures in a way that the market was, was trending towards and, and maybe still is. But again, the conversation, and there was, a, a lot of the conversation revolved around the impacts if it was allowed in any egg district, egg-zoned property, um, in the city, it would open it up to this part of the city as well. And, um, at that time, the commission was not interested in that use being up here in this part of the city. In the northwest corner.
Yes, Commissioner Rivera.
So is there anything that's stopping the city of Rosemont from making a stipulation where. Wedding event centers of this capacity would have to be on a larger parcel, meaning maybe ten acres. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just trying to get the understanding of where the rules are, how they change. We, we obviously, you know. Rezoned an area for this taproom on a parcel of twenty acres. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand the precedence that we have set. And how we go from there.
We, we would have to do a zoning ordinance text amendment and change the conditions that must be met by a commercial event center. To operate, to be approved.
Thank you.
So if we, but if we did that, we could say on five acres. East of Akron, south of forty-two, and on something twenty acres or forty acres or some number. Elsewhere in the city, Anthony, or not?
I, I think we could.
Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily, I, I still struggle with its proximity to, in eighty acres. As Commissioner Rivera pointed out, it's large land, but it's still residential.
And the owner and operator would have to have that be their principal residence also.
But it, it sounds like from Kalina that that is something that they're open to. Um, Commissioner Shmuzik.
Yep, I, you know, I hate to say no to anybody who's thinking of a commercial business, but going back to our discussions. When we were looking at the, the brewery out on, uh, Bacardi. I, I struggle with this also again, that it's already in an area that people around it assumed it would be rural res- residential. And also the fact it's on a gravel road again. You know, not intended for that kind of a, of a heavier usage. And so. I, I think at this, this point, I'm not kind of being weighed towards uh, changing the ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Shmuzik. Any other commissioners that want to speak on this item?
I would say I, I am very similar to Commissioner Shmuzik. I hate um, to dampen anyone's spirits and bringing some commercial development to our. To our town, um, especially when they are residents here and own property and. And such or, or nearby residents on and own property, but I, I do feel this is a residential area and I, I feel that opening up the. Changing the ordinance would open it up too much to things, areas we didn't want to have that event center. Location in agricultural land.
And we're not voting on anything, just so the commission is clear. This is, this is a discussion to get, to gauge um, an appetite before moving forward. For, for both staff and the applicant so that they would know, or the property owner, so they would know, you know. The realities and logistics of moving forward.
Anyone else from the commission wish to speak? Otherwise I will move forward. Kalina, I'm not sure if your hand is still raised from before, if you have. Um, raised it lately, as I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything else you wanted to say this evening.
I did not. I appreciate all of your guys' time. I know that, I know that the city of Rosemont is like this wonderful little family. I was, I. I've been born and raised here, which is also part of the reason why the land is so special to me. So I just thank you guys for all of your time and feedback.
Thank you, Kalina. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Is there anyone else um, attending the meeting this evening that would like to speak during the audience input section of our meeting? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. This evening on the consent agenda is our approval of the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. And for this, I would ask that um, Commissioner Tiergarden and Commissioner Hebert. Um, you guys can abstain from voting on this item as you were done in attendance at the March thirtieth meeting. Um, Anthony, we can see your screen still.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So if you, you guys can just abstain from the voting this evening on this item. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Or wait, are there any comments before I do that? Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, now we'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Shmuzik. Oh, Commissioner Shmuzik, you're on mute.
I think he should kick me off. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? It's moved by Commissioner Shmuzik, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Stacy, will you please take roll?
Aninka.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Shmuzik.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passes for the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda this evening is our public hearing section. We have two items for public hearing this evening. The first item we will be discussing is a request. By Susan, excuse me, a request by Susan Stein for a minor subdivision and rezoning, and I will turn that over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, that was probably a good segue as this, um, this item involves a minor subdivision and rezoning of a property. In the northwest portion of the city. It's very similar to a subdivision that occurred last year. Um, may recall the Deer Haven Platte. And that was a, I believe it was a sixteen acre parcel that was subdivided into three parcels, creating two new buildable. Lots and one existing, or one lot to uh, contain the existing home. Uh, you also may recall that the minor subdivision is one of the new um, components of our subdivision ordinance. It is, uh, it combines the preliminary and final plat approval into one single approval process. And uh, it is limited to subdivisions that create four or fewer parcels. Um, it isn't that, if the request is asking for no um, deviations from the code with regards to lot standards. Usually those would have to do with lot size, lot area, um, lot width. Uh, and then also that the streets and utilities are already in place and there isn't any futures, there aren't any future streets that would be. Required um, to develop the property. So uh, this, the request before us is a minor subdivision with a rezoning. Uh, so summary of this request, um, the applicant is proposing to rezone the subject parcel. Uh, this is an eighteen acre parcel. Zoned currently as AG agriculture. Um, it's being, uh, the request is to rezone that to rural residential. Uh, the act, the applicant, as I had just said, is seeking approval of a minor subdivision. And then um, the request is to create one new buildable parcel. Uh, and then one parcel would contain the existing home. And then the third parcel that would be created will be an outlot that doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance due to the fact that it doesn't have frontage along. A right of way, uh, but a condition of approval is that this outlot will be combined with a parcel south into the east. Of the um, subject property. So a little context to show you where this parcel is. Um, here is Robert, South Robert Trail or Highway three. This is McAndrews Road, and this is the northwest corner of the city um, up here. On the very far north part is one hundred and twentieth street. Uh, you'll see the larger parcel here, um, that was just. Uh, the topic of conversation with relation to a commercial event center. And then this parcel is just west of that. Um, immediately west of the site is the uh, uh, three parcels that make up the Deer Haven Platte. As I said, this uh, includes a rezoning request. Currently, it's zoned agriculture. Um, it's eighteen point six, seven acres in size. The applicant is requesting it be rezoned to rural residential. The rural residential zoning is, is consistent with the land use designation for this part of the city. Um, there are some remnant agricultural um, parcels that don't meet the lot standards for um, density. And so um, one thing that was discussed with the Deer Haven Platte was uh, if we should go ahead and rezone some of those parcels. You see them in the southern part of this map, um, that are clearly rural residential parcels that just. Still remain zoned AG agriculture. For whatever reason, over the years, um, it didn't get changed when those were platted. Likely due to the fact that the zoning ordinance was different when those were, uh, when those lots were created. Uh, just to show you again, as I mentioned, the land use plan, this parcel is located in the northwest portion of the city, and this whole area is guided. Um, for rural residential development. The rural residential designation and zoning in particular requires a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. Uh, with a maximum density of one, um, one dwelling unit per five acres. So at eighteen acres, the applicant is proposing two buildable lots on that eighteen acres, because remember that one outlot. On the southern portion of the site will be combined with another residential parcel. So from a density standpoint, it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. From a lot area standpoint, the smallest lot is two point five, three acres, which meets the minimum lot size in the rural residential zoning district. And then both of the parcels that will be fronting along one hundred and twentieth street do meet the lot width requirements. The new buildable lot will be served or accessed via its own driveway. Some of you may recall the Deer Haven Platte included a shared driveway requirement that um, was just one um. Kind of one issue with that site. So I just wanted to show an aerial to give you an idea of the existing conditions here. The um, proposed buildable lot will be in the northwest portion of the subject parcel. The existing house will be contained within another parcel, uh, the largest parcel out of here. Um, and I believe it's uh, eleven acres in size. And then the third parcel is on the south side of the um, overall site. And that one will be combined with a property located on Coffee Trail. So a more technical, clearer view of the existing conditions, you can see the existing house. Um, kind of in the mid, mid uh, middle of the site on the eastern side. With the existing driveway going over this isthmus, leading up to one twentieth street. The proposed uh, uh, buildable lot in the northwest. Portion of the site, uh, in, you'll see in, in a future slide here, um, will be served by its own driveway. Um, two things of, or one thing to note about the site, it does contain a, a number of wetlands. There's a wetland here that's uh, extends over into the adjacent parcel. And then uh, on this side, it looks like one big wetland, but really there's a, there's a narrow spot here, so it's treated as two wetlands separately. But um, it's, looks like one big one, and they are connected. And then there's also one um, more minor wetland, um, as you can see here, and it's been delineated. So the, the proposed plat shows uh, one parcel here, uh, in the northwest corner. This is two point five, three acres. There's another parcel that's in this area here, goes down to this parcel boundary along the south. Um, up to the, the wetland here. And then the third one is labeled Outlot A. Uh, that would be a non-buildable parcel due to its outlot status. Uh, and it will be combined with another par- property on the south side of the subject parcel. So finally, here's the grading and drainage plan. This is where I want to touch, or, or go over the um, wetland buffering that is required. As part of the um, city's comprehensive wetland management plan. Because the site wouldn't accommodate, uh, the driveway, the driveway itself is located within two required wetland buffers. As well as the, the proposed house location, um, kind of encroaching on some of that buffer area, particularly with. With the thirty foot um, structural setback that's required from a wetland buffer to allow for usable yard space. The applicant is using um, buffer averaging, which is allowed by the city code. Um, to uh, make up for some of those impacts within those buffers. So the area that is being mitigated or reduced in size. Is this portion just south of the proposed house, and then on either side of the driveway, and these are in kind of a hatched. Uh, pattern. And then the, the area of the buffer that's being added or widened. To um, account for that reduction is in the darker hatching area here. So. This portion, as well as the area around the driveway, is being made up for by some narrow extension of the buffer along the southeast side. As well as a, a deeper extension of the buffer into the property. On the other side, where the driveway is encroaching into that buffer area, uh, that is being uh, accounted for by widening the buffer. Kind of more thoroughly around the whole width of that wetland. So it's, it's ultimately resulting in an equal amount of square footage of buffer area. Uh, and that's buffer averaging. The, some of the requirements for this is that uh, conservation easements be placed over the buffer. To make sure that that area is maintained, um, it is not impacted through mowing or fill. Or, or the construction of structures. Um, and then also drainage and utility easements are placed over that. So if the city does need to go in and do work to um. Improve the functionality of those wetlands, um, we are able to do so. So that is um, about the extent of what I have to share with regards to that. Um, there are two motions listed in the recommended action. Let's see here. And um, the first one being that the city count, that the commission recommends the city council adopt an ordinance that would rezone the subject property. From AG agricultural to RR rural residential. And then the second one would be, is the motion to recommend approval of the minor subdivision. Uh, with those conditions in there, specifically ones of note are that conservation easements be placed over the buffer areas. And the wetlands themselves too, um, that the removal of trees be minimized. Um, some of the standard uh, development fees like park dedication, stormwater, uh, trunk charges. Um, and then also that the Outlot A is not buildable, and that it shall be combined with the adjacent parcel. Um, with that, I can take questions from the commission. Um, I know that the applicant is present, who can speak to this as well. So, yeah.
Thank you, Anthony. Commissioner Hebert, you've got a question?
Yes, Anthony, I have a question on the grading, uh, grading and drainage plan that you showed and about the buffer areas. Um, the proposed site of, of the, uh, on the new lot of, of the, of the structure. Is, is that an accurate depiction of where the structure will actually be placed, or does that um. Will that come later when they actually apply for the, for the permit to build that structure?
Right, that's a, that's a general concept. Um, all of those setback requirements and, and stuff like that will be reviewed at the building permit. Level during that process.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Commissioner Reed.
Just a couple uh, clarifying questions, I think. Uh, the, the outlet, let me see, Outlot A, Anthony, is that? Being combined with the adjacent parcel to, to balance the density requirement?
N- no, no, because even, even if that Outlot A was removed from there, there would still be enough um, land in the two other parcels. To make up for that density, or to, to accommodate those two parcels. Um, it's just simply the, the outlot is, the applicant is found a buyer who's willing to purchase it. And they're doing that as part of this.
Okay, I, I read it as, as, as requirement and condition, so I wasn't clear.
If, if it's being platted as an outlot, we're requiring it to be combined because it would just be sitting there.
Okay. And then the last one is, are there any, any flooding concerns and that, I mean, there's a lot of wetland there. And it's, you know, um, s- it's kind of surrounds those areas. Have there been any flooding issues?
Uh, I, I'm not aware of any flooding issues. I know that the slopes are pretty steep leading down to the um, wetlands. So I, from an impact on the proposed house or the existing house, um, I, I don't think that there would be any. Um, there aren't um, a lot of changes actually occurring with the one parcel being buildable. Um, that shouldn't add to any of the flooding issues out there. Um, I know Brian Erickson, the city engineer is, is on the meeting. He can maybe. If he knows of any issues that are currently in, in existence. He can maybe, um, if he knows of any issues that are currently in, in existence up there, he can speak to that.
Uh, it, I would agree with Anthony. I, I am not aware of any flooding issues up there, at least as far as structure. I mean, we've had our, our challenges with the roadway, um, and we're working on a couple of projects to do some improvements there. But I, I'm unaware of anything with structures. In, in my history with Rosemount, which is, you know, clearly uh not the longest, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none at this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. If anyone is in attendance this evening that would like to speak, please raise your hand and um city staff will call on you. And at that time, you can unmute your microphone and speak.
And I know the applicant is present, so um, uh, and the applicant is Sue Stein. And Sue, if you did want to have, if you did have anything that you wanted to add, um, ahead of any other public comments being received. Feel free to um raise your hand and jump in right now.
And I would just remind everyone, um, before they start speaking, to state your name and address for the record. Anthony, it does look like Sue has her hand raised.
Okay, Sue, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, I'm Sue Stein, thirty-eight twenty-one, twentieth Street West. Um, as far as a question of flooding, there has not been any problems because the structures are all. Um, the elevation is high enough, um, as you can see around the ponds, it's a very steep slope on pretty much all of the ponds. So that is not a problem. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item? Anthony, I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone?
Anyone either.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Anybody? Commissioner Reed?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Schmuzak. Stacy, will you please take role?
Vera. Tier Graden.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Hey Bear. Schmuzak.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Kenninger.
I. And Commissioner Hubert, we could not hear you. I just want to make sure we can. I don't know if it was me. Oh, thank you. Just, you know, I don't want to get in any trouble with record, public record. Perfect, um, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any final comments or questions from the commission before we move forward this item this evening for motions? Okay. I think that. Um, with that, we would be ready to move forward with motions on this item. Anyone would like to move forward with those? Commissioner Marlo.
Do I need to say both or just one at a time?
We should probably do one at a time.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property. From AG Agricultural to RR Rural Residential.
Is there a second? Commissioner Rivera.
A second though.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Marlo, seconded by Commissioner Rivera. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
I.
Marlo.
I.
Music.
Hi.
Hey Bear.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Tier Graden.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
And with that, the motion passes and we have one more motion on this item this evening. Commissioner Marlo, you want to move that one too?
Sure. Like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve a minor subdivision for dancing waters with the following conditions. Items one through six.
And is there a second? Commissioner Rivera.
A second, the motion.
It is moved by Commissioner Marlo, seconded by Commissioner Rivera. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
I.
Marlo.
I.
Schmuzak.
I.
Hey Bear. Reed.
Hi.
Tier Graden.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
And the motion passes. This item will move forward to city council on, on May eighteenth. Okay, um, the next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a, um. An item from the city of Rosemount for a comprehensive plan amendment for the east side of South Robert Trail between Canada Avenue and Canada Circle. And I will turn that over to Kyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. And like I always say, I should, I should have this completely down perfectly. I never seem to. So just bear with me while I try to flip my screen over here and get the next thing up.
We're only on month thirteen, Kyle. And we have it.
There we go. So, I'm getting there. So the item in front of us tonight is a request, um, that's being brought forward by staff. So it's a city initiated action to amend the comprehensive plan for three parcels. That are located along uh basically South Robert Trail or Highway Three in Rosemount. And these parcels are um all located to the east of Highway Three. Two of which are existing um parcels that have so, a use on them. And the third is a larger parcel that's just outside and could be seen as being within the Rosemount Business Park. So, head here. So the two amendments here are asked to consider, really, there's two parts to the amendments. Uh, the first would be map corrections, and this would be to fix uh what we uh have deemed to be unintentional changes to the Willis Auto Repair. Property and then the South Metro Islamic Center sites. Uh, these had a different type of uh land use and are zoned differently than what was adopted with the twenty forty comp plan. So as far as we can tell, when the city's comp plan was updated back uh just about a year and a half ago. Uh, the, a underlying land use got carried over that shouldn't have been there. So this is again, just intending to fix a discrepancy between what the previous land use was for those properties and what got adopted with our twenty forty comp plan. The second piece of this um would be expanding the business park land use guidance uh to a thirty-two point six acre parcel. It's at the western edge of the Rosemount Business Park. So this would be changing it from the current designation of community commercial to business park, which would match then the rest of the Rosemount Business Park. And most of the properties are located to the north and to the east of this particular site. So again, just to stress, this amendment is being initiated by the city and this is being done in advance of, of future zoning applications for a larger warehouse and distribution center. Uh, on that business park parcel. So if it weren't for this property or this project coming forward at this time, staff probably would not have moved forward with those two map corrections. But because we're taking action on this, uh, the planning commission is being asked to take action on all, all of this together. Uh, in order to again, fix those discrepancies and then to move forward with the present request. So in terms of those specific um parcels and sites that are under consideration tonight, there are three. Uh, the first is one-five-two-eight-zero Robert Trail South. This is the Willis Auto Repair. Uh, this is, would be changing the land use from regional commercial to community commercial. Uh, the second would be one-four or one-five-four-zero-zero Robert Trail South. This is the South Metro Islamic Center. Also formerly known as the uh Bowling Alley Site along Highway Three. Uh, that change would be from regional commercial to BP Business Park. Um, the business park zoning was applied uh to that particular site when the Islamic Center uh proposal came forward. Uh, the business park zoning is required because it's um the district that would allow for a religious institution versus the commercial um districts. Which would not allow that type of use. Uh, then lastly, we have this parcel number here, which is owned by the Paul Family Limited Partnership. Uh, this is the parcel that would change from CC Community Commercial uh to Business Park. So just to get us oriented in terms of the, the projects we're talking about or the parcels we're talking about, hopefully you can see my cursor here in the middle of the screen. Highway forty-two is running uh east and west here. Uh, Highway Three runs north and south uh through downtown, up in this area, crosses Highway forty-two. And then travels by the two project sites, which are the areas in yellow here, and eventually connects down with Highway forty-six down in the south part of the site. Or a part of the map here, uh, down here as I'm showing. Uh, there is kind of an odd thing happening with the map here where for some reason the label for Highway Three got shifted over here. So Highway Three does not run uh to the east of the railroad tracks. It is located to the west of the tracks. Until it crosses here at the bridge and then goes under, uh, and then moves over to the west side, I'm sorry, the east side of those tracks. Uh, so again, this is Highway Three as it runs through the uh north part of, the middle part of the city here. Uh, the progressive rail, uh rail right of way is this line right here. Uh, that runs at a straight diagonal line, uh kind of north, uh kind of from the southwest to the northeast uh through this project area. And so it's worth pointing out that all of these parcels do have a direct um connection or directly abutting to the rail right of way. Uh, both the Willis and the South Islamic Center parcel, then the, the site that we'll be talking about, um, you know, is part of this proposed project. Which is located right here. Uh, just other thing I want to quickly point out on this air photograph is that the developed portion of the Rosemount Business Park is up here. So this is right immediately adjacent to uh Highway forty-two. Uh, this is Biscayne Avenue, and then the main entrance into the business park comes off of Boulder Trail uh running east and west here. And there's a connection off of forty-two, which is Business Parkway right here. And right now, border, Boulder Trail, uh, as it heads further to the west, does take a turn and then moves directly to the south, but then terminates right here. So there's a cul-de-sac at the edge of this parcel located further north of the project site. So as I'll point out in, in some of the other slides here, part of the project that the city will be asked to consider in the future. Uh, will include an extension of Boulder Trail, so that it connects from its current uh dead end at the cul-de-sac right here. Further to the south, and then eventually connecting to Highway Three, uh, right across from Canada Circle, uh, the small little um. Road that drops out further to the west off of Highway Three, so in this location. So the next slide shows us the existing land use plan or the, uh, basically the twenty forty land use plan that was adopted by the city again about a year and a half ago. And then what the proposed uh amendment would do for this particular area. So first of all, starting with the two existing part, the two existing developed parcels. Uh, you see there, these two parcels here, again, the Willis Auto Site and the um Religious Institution Site, which is located here. Uh, these are both located to the east of South Robert Trail, and as you can see from this map, both have that darker red color, which signifies the regional commercial use. Uh, and again, I, I have no idea why uh those got flipped when we did the twenty forty land use plan. Prior to twenty forty, uh, these were shown as uh all community commercial. And then with the Islamic Center, the southern piece was uh rezoned and, and the comp plan was changed to Business Park to accommodate the religious institution. Uh, the thirty-six um acre parcel uh that is subject to and, and will be part of a future land use application uh is this site right here. And again, this is shown in the current plan as being um CC Community Commercial. Uh, the proposed land use amendment would change the site to BP or Business Park. Uh, it's also worth pointing out that uh within the past maybe four or five years, the city did take action to uh redevelop. And change the guidance for this parcel. This is located off of Canada Circle. Uh, this is location where you see the CA Gear um business. This is located on the southern piece down here. This was at one point a piece of property the city acquired, uh, that was access railroad or right of way uh property. Uh, back before the road was realigned uh near the bridge. And so the city did move forward with some uh proposals uh for redevelopment and ended up um selling the property to CA Gear. To build a facility that you see on the property right now. Just one other general comment about this area, uh, for those that have, have been in the city or been um following uh city actions within the past ten, fifteen years or so. Uh, this area is part of a larger study that was, was called, it was called Sugar, and it was the South Urban uh Regional uh something. Which I can't remember the exact uh terms, and maybe one of you do know that. Um, but that was just looking at kind of the land use and development patterns in the area and, and proposed and, and brought forwards and proposals for. You know, land use changes and appropriate land uses for this entire corridor. Uh, really looking at the idea of having South Robert Trail, uh, looking at the potential for South Robert Trail to serve more as, as a commercial center. Uh, especially as we move further to the north near Highway forty-two and south as we get closer to Highway forty-six. So there were some recommendations from that study, and that kind of led to some of these land use changes in the comprehensive plan. Where you see more of the commercial or community commercial located down here further south on, on South Robert Trail. Uh, at one point, I think the uh parcel where the CA Gear was also guided for commercial development, which was changed to support the business uh. Business park uh use that's on that site right now. Uh, so this would represent a change from some of the past um decisions that the city has made. However, uh, as you can see here, it does tie in nicely with the rest of the business park. This is a parcel that's still relatively uh far away, um, you know, from a commercial perspective speaking, from Highway forty-six. This intersection is about a quarter mile north of the Highway forty-six intersection. Uh, and then as you can see with the extension of the road and how things connect here, this really is ending up being a parcel that's more connected to the business park. Uh, than it is maybe to any commercial center that might happen further to the south. Then finally, to kind of reiterate that, uh, as you can see here, and this maybe doesn't show exactly how much lands there, but there is quite a bit of land that still ha- carries that commercial guidance. Uh, that's located further south of here that is and will be available for commercial development at some point in the future. Uh, so I think from staff's perspective, um, like we believe that there's adequate room uh to accommodate a fairly significant commercial um intersection or commercial node. Down in this location, and that the proposed change to Business Park for this particular parcel doesn't significantly impact the city's ability to bring in. And promote this area for commercial growth and development as, as things move forward. And then lastly, I want to show a map, just kind of blowing up the aerial photograph a little bit for this area. Again, focusing on mostly the thirty-six acre parcel right here, which would be subject to uh future land use request. And then pointing out that the two parcels up here, you can see, do have existing development on them and can kind of put those in context with what's happening in, in the surrounding area. So unfortunately, this kind of cuts off down here, so it's a little harder to see some of the land that's available down here. But there are currently about three vacant parcels that all are at least in that ten to fifteen acre range. That again, would support future uh commercial development down in that location of the city. Uh, so this kind of also gives you a better look, I think, at where the existing connection of Boulder Avenue stops in the cul-de-sac right here. Which would then be further extended if this project moves forward uh to connect to this site and then out to Highway Three down here in this particular location. So kind of just talking about that business park change more specifically, so we mentioned that the, there's thirty-two point six acres that would be changed uh from community commercial to business park. This would allow future development of the subject parcel with the adjacent northern thirty, roughly thirty acres or so. So we're looking at uh development that would take place on this site, and then the property further to the north up here. So these would be combined into one larger parcel, and then the user would locate, you know, roughly in the middle of, of this section. Uh, there would be some additional land that could be further developed or split off down here, uh, depending on how the, the project moves forward. But there is some potential for some land down at the southern portion of, of that project uh being uh left available for uh future development. Uh, the proposed use would be a regional warehouse and distribution center. Uh, the, and the project, as I mentioned, would connect to Boulder Trail at Highway Three. So at this time, the city does not have a lot of additional details that can be shared at this time regarding the proposal, other than to note that it would be a use that is consistent with. The overall land use category for Business Park. However, it would require some, you know, more specialized zoning to accommodate the proposed uh use that is a little more heavily weighed towards distribution. And trucking activity on that particular site. Um, so in order to accommodate that, the, there would need to be a future rezoning as part of any future applications that come forward uh to change the site to light industrial. Uh, in addition to that, uh, before any development could proceed, there would need to be a preliminary and final plat approval. And then lastly, there still would need to be some sort of conditionally used or site plan review approval associated with any project that's moving forward um as well. Uh, so I think the, the point to stress there is that uh this is not the, the last time the city would have a chance to be able to take action on this particular site. Or for any future uses on the site, and that there are numerous other approvals that are coming, uh, should the project continue to move forward. Um, and then eventually get in front of the, the planning commission. Uh, maybe key to that, that conversation is this idea that should this particular use move forward, it would need that light industrial rezoning, which would require rezoning action on the part of the city. So there still is, is a little bit more discretion than some of the uh other zoning permits you might see. Uh, where the city does have some ability to more fully evaluate the use. And as I say in my staff report, typically with a comprehensive plan amendment, like the one that's in front of the city tonight. The, the city would usually request or would like to see additional plans and details, and it would be submitted as part of one larger application versus having it split up like this. However, given the tight timeframe that the uh proposed developer has kind of put in place for the project. And the city's desire to kind of continue to work on this to ensure that their uh, the, the potential project could move forward this summer. Uh, we're asking the, the planning commission and the council to consider a change at this point uh to facilitate the, the future applications that might come down um, uh, further on. So the final point I want to point here, or the final um point in the slide here is just to note that under the city's business park um land use guidance. There are two other zoning districts that can be applied to the site. Um, both C four will be appropriate, as you can see here in your intersections of major road, ma- major roads. And then secondly, light industrial is also considered. and then secondly, light industrial is also considered appropriate, you know, next to adjacent industrial planned areas or in areas that will not impact primary views along major roads, and that can be accommodated in areas internal to the Business Park. So I think staff believes that with the proposed distribution center use that will be located here and being located in the central portion of the site in this location, you can see there is quite a bit of separation from the use, you know, with the railway coming through here, with existing uses further to the west, and then with some additional space down here. So it certainly seems to fit within the criteria that were established by the city for considering, you know, maybe a different mix of use and type of uses within the Business Park overall. And then being at the far edge of the Business Park, it still would leave, you know, quite a bit of room and parcels available for future development under that Business Park guidance that has been established previously. So, you know, finally, I think I'd like to just note that the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend approval or amendments to the 2040 comprehensive plan to change the future land use guidance for the three parcels as described, both in the staff report and in the map that you have in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Kyle.
I'd like to end and then open it up for any questions from the commission or if there's any questions from the public. This is, does require a public hearing, so that has been published, and that is part of the conversation for tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, just kind of one, I mean, this all makes sense to me, Kyle, and I mean, I generally think I support it. But just one kind of what-if scenario. So we're kind of doing this to align it to Business Park and in anticipation of getting some new commercial business in that area. But the what-if is, you know, what if that doesn't go through? And what if there is somebody who wants community commercial, which is the current zoning, right? What would we be foregoing here? What are our risks around on that type of scenario playing out?
Well, like any request, there's always the opportunity to go back and change it back. So I would, you know, kind of point out that if there is a, you know, let's say this particular project doesn't move forward, there always is a potential for the city to consider another application to change land use back to what it was previously. And because this is adjacent to an area that already has that kind of community commercial zoning or land use guidance, it would make sense, I think, to look at it in that framework. So you know, you always run the risk that if there's another use that maybe is really actively interested in this parcel, that you'd be losing out on that. But this one site is a little unique because of its, you know, really connection to the Business Park, and because it really isn't developable until the road gets built to serve this property. So there has to be some kind of connection, even if this were left off as a separate parcel, you know, looking at marketing as a separate parcel, there still needs to be a fairly substantial road improvement to actually get access to this site. And as part of that, the city's going to want to see, you know, those connections get made through the Business Park. So this particular project kind of accomplishes that, where there's that immediate connection that provides access to the site, but then also that really opens up not only the Business Park property up here for development and access and connections to that road, but also provides, you know, what will be the needed connection for this property to develop, especially in the north as commercial. So I think, given what we've seen and the interest, you know, that's, you know, quite honestly somewhat lacking for commercial development right now. At this particular point in time, this change probably makes some sense, especially if there's a larger user out there that has plans for development of that whole western side.
Thank you, Kyle.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none, at this time, we will open up this item for a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item tonight, you may do so by using the raise your hand function on Zoom, and city staff will call on you. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record. So at this time, we will open up the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I don't see any hands coming up.
Okay, sounds good. We'll give it just one more second for any last minute hands, and then we'll move forward. Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Motion by Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. Stacy, will you take role?
Henninger.
Aye.
Marlowe.
Aye.
Schmiesek.
Aye.
Haber.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Tiergajin.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
And motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any final comments or questions on this item before we move forward with the motion on it? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Rivera.
I make a motion to recommend approval of amendments to the 2040 Rosemont Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use guidance for parcels along South Robert Trail to patch the present land uses and to facilitate development of a larger parcel within the Rosemont Business Park.
Is there a second? Second, yes, Commissioner Schmiesek.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Schmiesek. Stacy, will you take role?
Rivera.
Aye.
Tiergajin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Haber.
Aye.
Schmiesek.
Aye.
Marlowe.
Aye.
Henninger.
Aye. Motion passes. This item will also move forward to the City Council on May 18th. And Kyle, just in case it was really bothering you, SUGAR stood for South Urban Gateway Analysis for Reinvestment.
Thank you, Melissa.
How's that for my memory?
That would have bothered me all night.
I'm sure it would have.
I totally looked it up while he was presenting.
Did I get the answer right? Was I right?
You sure did.
Yes, that was many moons ago I served on that committee. At this time, we will open it up for discussion. If there's any items that need to be brought forward to the commission during the discussion time, I want to start off with a welcome to our new Community Development Director, Adam. Welcome to your first Planning Commission meeting, Adam. I don't know if you want to say a few words or say anything to the commission or not?
I'll just say thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be here. Yep, definitely my first meeting. I hear my kids running around upstairs, so extra thanks to my wife for managing, managing that crew while we do this night meeting here, but happy to be here. Certainly looking to support all of the great work that everybody has done, both with the commission and then with the excellent staff that are in place here and made the presentations tonight. So great job to everybody. Happy to be here.
Thanks. We're happy to have you, Adam. Um, Kyle, I had a couple other things on my list for discussion. Training with Mary, did you hear back from her by chance today?
I did talk to Mary this afternoon, and so we had originally, we had, I'd asked her to give me kind of a schedule for what dates might work for her, looking at our upcoming meetings. We had talked about the possibility of doing a session where we would have our normal workshop meeting set. However, she's not able to make that meeting.
Okay.
Did say that she would be available for the second meeting in May, which would be the, let me get my calendar here. The 25th of May. And what would work best for her would be a session like we've done in the past where we have a session with her before the regular meeting. So we would meet either at 5:00 or 5:30, depending on the availability of commissioners. And for those that maybe aren't aware of what we've done for new commissioners and for existing commissioners who want some refreshers, we've always asked our attorney to come in and do a presentation on, kind of focusing on the roles of the Planning Commission, some of the legal kind of challenges you might face and questions you might have, and then just generally opening up for questions about, again, kind of your role and function, what kind of things we do. It gives staff a chance to also go over some things with you about kind of expectations and, and how the planning question does things, what type of requests you're going to be considering, and again, hopefully open it up for any questions you may have about your role as a commissioner. We try to keep that about an hour in kind of recognition of your time, but with the meetings being virtual and so forth, you know, it's been a little more difficult to try to find times that work for everybody and have it work. So I guess what I'm asking is if that time sometime before the second May meeting or the May, what did it say, 27th meeting, 25th?
25th.
Sorry. If that would be an acceptable time, and if not, we can certainly try to reach out to her and find some other times that work. Right now, that's what she suggested.
Would commissioners be able to make a 5:15? I think Kyle, 5:30 makes me a little nervous because it pushes right up to our 6:30 meeting. But maybe 5:15 to 6:15?
She said she'd be available anytime after about 5:00 o'clock that night would work out fine.
I'll look kind of to our new commissioners. Commissioners Tiergajin, Commissioner Haber, and Commissioner Marlowe. I don't think we did this last year as we moved into the pandemic for you. So does that time on May 25th work for you guys?
Yes, that time would work for me.
Works for me as well.
Okay, sounds good. And then any of the other commissioners that would like to attend, please feel free to do so. I I will attend. I know it's a good refresher. I always enjoy refreshing myself on, on some of those things. So let's plan for 5:15 on May 25th.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I will pass that on to our attorney.
Okay, perfect. And then Stacy, can we get a separate Zoom link for that session? Yeah, from the normal one? Thank you. And then the other thing I had, just to give an update on, I did ask all of you to send in to Stacy your comfort level in meeting in person, and I have talked with Kyle and also been in correspondence with Logan. And we would like to get back to some in-person meetings. We are going to target something in that July-August timeframe. So we will plan to hold our May and June meetings virtually, and we will look at the July. Maybe in, in June, we'll kind of discuss July or August for, hoping to get back into a in-person format. And then for those that may not be comfortable at that point even, we'll work with you on a, on an option from that. So I think those are all the discussion items. I had Kyle, Anthony, Adam, anything you guys wanted to bring up? Or had for the discussion?
I didn't have anything else to bring tonight.
Okay. Sounds good. I usually just do a quick review, too, of our calendar. So Kyle, without the training on May 11th, do we have plans for needing a workshop session on May 11th?
No, at this point, we do not need to have a meeting, so we would suggest not meeting on the 11th, and then we would just plan on seeing you again on the 25th.
Okay, so our next regular, regularly scheduled meeting would be May 25th. Then after that, we have June 8th would be a workshop, so we should probably hold that at this time, I believe, Kyle. I know there's a lot of stuff pending coming through.
Yes, we do have a lot of pending applications, so we're still asking the commission to continue to hold that as a potential meeting time for either workshop or regular meeting.
So we should hold the June 8th date and then our normal June 22nd meeting as well. So please make sure those are on your calendar. And then just our reminder, especially for our new members, it's the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month that we meet. So just make sure those are on your calendar. We don't always need that second Tuesday, so we usually discuss in here if we're going to need the next upcoming one or not. Okay, any other items for the commission this evening? Okay, with that, I will adjourn our regular meeting for Tuesday, April 27th. Good night, everybody, and one more last welcome to our new members. It was great to have you join us. We can't wait to meet you guys in person as well as Commissioner Marlowe. You've been with us for 13 months, Commissioner Marlowe. We'll meet in person someday. Have a good night, everybody.